Good evening. This meeting of the Board of Education for October 7th, 2013 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. All items that will be voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website, excuse me, and will be archived there for future reference if you are interested. At this time, we will have public comment. Ms. Patterson, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. We have six. Our first two speakers are John Hirsch and Jane Greenhye.
Great. And as you are making your way up to the speakers' table, I'm just going to read through the instructions. I'd like to thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply value public input and look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. The Board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the Board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you have left your contact information, either phone number or email, on the sign-up sheet. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to Board members, staff, and other presenters. While we value everyone's perspective, our rules do not allow for criticism of individual staff members by name during public comment. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please state, please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes, a green light will appear on the table in front of you. When there's one minute remaining, a yellow light will appear, and when your time's up, a red light will appear with a little buzzer. At that time, we respectfully ask that you conclude your comments. Again, we sincerely appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is John Hirsch, H-I-R-S-C-H, and I'm one of three co-chairs for the Portland Eighty Percenters for Educational Excellence. We believe the decisions being made at the bargaining table should benefit students. I will present one of our four recommendations this evening. We want the assignment, transfer, and reductions in staff sections of the contract negotiated to ensure that we have highly qualified teachers in every classroom. The contract language needs to incorporate the Oregon statute definition of competence and apply it to teacher transfers, reductions, and layoffs. The statute states, and I quote, "Competence means the ability to teach a subject or grade level based on recent teaching experience related to that subject or grade level within the past five years." Compare that language with the current contract. Competence is defined in the current contract as the ability to teach an area of endorsement or grade level based on recent teaching experience related to the area of endorsement or grade level within the last five years. So currently, educators can teach anywhere within their licensed area of endorsement regardless of their recent subject matter teaching. Since many licenses endorse K through eight or K through 12, this may mean a teacher who has no experience with one age group or a given subject would have the right to bump or be assigned in an area for which they are not currently qualified. The best way to explain this is by way of examples. A long-term elementary music teacher, the area of endorsement being music, was placed in a high school choral and strings orchestra assignment. The educator had not taught high school for many years and had never played or taught a string instrument. The impact? Students dropped the class and the choral program died. Another example: A teacher endorsed in social studies who has taught history and government for 20 years under the current contract language could bump out an experienced but junior psychology teacher even though the senior teacher had no history of teaching psychology. In fact, under the current contract, the senior teacher would be able to take the position even if that person had never taken a psychology class. We believe that negotiators should adopt the state law definition and build some protections in for long-term teachers so they get a reasonable amount of extra training to qualify in a timely fashion for available positions, or the district establish a special training fund for teachers who are up for disposition but are not immediately able to take that job. Our students deserve qualified educators in every class, and educators need to have the training and experience for their assignments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jane Greenholt. I'm in my 13th year as a Portland public school parent. I have a freshman and a senior both at Lincoln. I'm also here to speak about the union contract negotiations from a parent perspective. First, I'm really hoping that PAT and PPS can model the Oregon legislature, which made some tough compromises to get an agreement which hopefully will start reversing the state's disinvestment in public education. This is certainly a better model than our shutdown federal government, which is a national embarrassment, and I think a strike would be a similar statement to our students that our leaders can't get things done. For most parents, the most important thing for students is getting great teachers in every classroom, and there's nothing more important than a good teacher teaching enough hours. So it would be ludicrous for Portland to freeze last year's woefully inadequate instruction hours into the contract, especially at a time when the legislature is coming up with money to increase instruction hours and hire more teachers. For me, it's not rocket science that Portland's low high school graduation rate is tied to the fact that high school students don't get the bare minimum instructions hours set by the state. And while we're very grateful that the Board moved to start addressing the problem, we still have a ways to go, at least to get ninth and 10th graders getting a full academic day. My freshman has a study hall and PE and actors workshop, so I think he could have a bit more academics in his day. I'm sure the reason the teachers are even offering such a proposal is because PPS is trying to lift the 180 cap, and so teachers are concerned that instruction hours will be increased by increasing class sizes and student load, and this would be a very bad outcome for students. So surely, there must be some room for compromise here, especially in light of the additional state funds. These funds should only be spent on hiring teachers and increasing instruction hours for students. And finally, I would urge you to change the hiring process and get rid of the system of hiring rounds, which just puts Portland at a disadvantage, and that's not going to cost anything to change. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Our next two speakers are Frank Selker and Michael Bailey.
Should I begin? I'm Frank Selker. It's S-E-L-K-E-R, and I've had a couple of students at Portland schools for many years, one just graduated last year. Thank you for the chance to speak. I wanted to second some things they said in Mr. Hirsch's comments. I very much agree that teachers need to have competency in their subject. My students have had teachers that didn't know some basics of what they were assigned to teach, and currently, one of my students has two empty periods. I'm not going to call them free. I'm going to call them empty periods. So I very much endorse what Jane said as well. Teachers deserve excellent compensation and respect and support. There's no question about that. My family's a union family, and I understand their perspective. But Portland also deserves excellent school system, and this can only be achieved, in my opinion, with accountability, and with accountability, the power to act. So the district must be accountable for the quality of the principals, and the principals accountable for the quality of the schools, and it follows that the districts must be able to replace principals, and the principals must be able to replace teachers. This includes also hiring the best new teachers, which means getting rid of this current crazy system, which very much disadvantages us in terms of getting good teachers. Knowing which teacher's excellent is not that hard. The students know, the parents know, the principals know, and I think it's a bit of a red herring that people say, "Well, how can we possibly measure?" Everybody on the ground knows. The issue is not knowing; it's allowing action based on what people do know. And I wanted to comment that there are many thousands of citizens that care deeply about what you're doing here. Sometimes they're not here because they have more diffused interest, they have jobs, they're on playgrounds, but they certainly care, and sometimes they may not feel they can make a difference or are even intimidated. But I wanted you to know that there are a lot of citizens behind you here. And the conversations on the playground, at the water coolers, are going to reflect deeply what you do. What you do takes courage, and I very much appreciate that. It's not an easy task, and I appreciate you doing it. I admire it. For excellent schools, we must be able to hire early. We must be able to move teachers according to principal preferences. Pardon? Oh, okay, sorry. And the teachers, I think the best teachers don't fear that. I think the best teachers crave that, and I appreciate your support in getting us there.
I think the timer started before I started speaking because I didn't know I was supposed to start.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith. My name is Michael Bailey, B-A-I-L-E-Y. I am president of the National Disability Rights Network in Washington, DC. And although I'm a resident of Portland and divide my time between here and my office and DC, we are the largest cross-disability advocacy organization in the world, running 57 nonprofit law firms, one in every state, every territory, the District of Columbia, and a huge Native American program in New Mexico. I am also the author of Special Education: A Parent's Guide to a Child's Success, which is the largest-selling special education guide for parents yet published. Both of my daughters are graduates of Grant High School. One of them was a valedictorian, and one of them was in special education. I am speaking to you tonight about the general subject of seclusion and restraint and the use of seclusion and restraint cells. Four years ago, my organization published this report, which through the courtesy of your recorder will be made available to each of you. I hope you will have time to at least peruse it. It came to us because of complaints about death and serious physical injury to students in special education in every single state, and these are highlighted in this report. Our recommendations to Congress are on page 39, and we very nearly passed a federal standard two years ago. It passed the House, died in the Senate, but it's ready for a markup in January with bipartisan support. Senator Harkin will be introducing it, and it is summarized here. When Portland Public Schools appeared at least to be very stubborn about removing the seclusion restraint cells at Pioneer School, an internet petition was circulated. I went through three minutes? All right. Lastly, I'd well draw your attention to a case, September 16th, 2013, out of the Ninth Circuit, Payne versus Peninsula School District, which holds that the use of seclusion restraint cells violates the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments, the constitutional rights of special education students, and it also holds that school districts who do not adequately train personnel in the use of coercive techniques can be held liable.
And our final two speakers are Angela Jarvis-Holland and Sheila Warren.
Hello. My name's Angela Jarvis-Holland, and I am the executive director of the Northwest Dan Syndrome Association and the All Born In Movement to Create a More Inclusive Civil Society. I represent over 1,400 families and two children very particularly, who are Portland Public School students and my two boys. I'd like to reference the same issue that Michael brought up. I spent a lot of time on the Long Range Facilities Planning Group, and it's very important to me that it be noted publicly that neither NWDSA or the Disability Rights Oregon that gave statements in support of the bond want any single taxpayer dollar spent on seclusion rooms, seclusion cells, segregated schools for people with emotional, like Pioneer. That statement that was made when we saw on the news the reluctance to remove those rooms, it jarred me very deeply. And McMinnville explored other alternatives, and at the elementary school level where they've seen 72 restraints, in one year, that 72 dropped to 15 after adopting some training, and 54 restraints in 2007 and '08 returned to just the number one in the following year. It works to train people. It works to support people. We have an awful lot of resources. I have a conference that brings best practices into focus, and I stand in solidarity with Sheila and her work. It's children that I represent, and it's children of color that overwhelmingly are subjected to these outdated practices, and they deserve better from us. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. I'm Sheila Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N. I'm the founder of Portland Parent Union and the director of Portland Parent Union, and I'm here in behalf of NWDSA and DRO, which is Michael Bailey. There is little evidence that seclusion helps children, but plenty of evidence that it hurts them. Seclusion rooms do take children out of the classroom where they could be learning. Teachers and students can be injured forcing a struggling child into a seclusion room. Research shows that the children have committed suicide, hurt themselves, and even died inside seclusion rooms, plus a lot of times, staff are not properly trained. We, PPU, have represented families who have witnessed restraints of their children in an improper manner, including being locked in a room to de-escalate the behavior, only for the behavior to become worse. I wanted, I was researching this out, and I found a parent's story, and I wanted to read that. In February, the Star News reported, this is New Hanover County Schools, in February, the Star News reported that parents filed a complaint against New Hanover County Schools with the Office of Civil Rights, questioning the use of seclusion rooms. Seclusion rooms amount to a closed side space with padding where students with severe disabilities and out-of-control behaviors, because that's what we see, can be placed under observation during emotional episodes. Each special education student has an individualized education plan, or IEP, that's designed by parents and school representatives. Each IEP includes ways teachers can intervene when a student starts to get agitated. Teachers go through several de-escalation strategies to calm the student down before they use something more extreme. Bill Trant, executive director of Special Education in the New Hanover County Schools, said, "If all else fails, all these other little steps to try get to this." Boy, there may be an intervention that could include physical restraint or seclusion. I'll just go over, boy, that three minutes was fast. It's two minutes? Yes, because I timed myself several times at home, so I know.
Do I get another minute?
Can I go in and read the rest of this? Okay, can I go?
Okay. If all else fails, all these other little steps, okay, let me get, this woman is amazing, her testimony. Now, just seven months later, one mother wants legislators to hear how isolation impacts her child. I am proposing here today that we enact a mandatory student rights committee that will provide for procedural safeguards, ensure that the students' civil and basic human rights are provided for. The Students' Rights Committee will look very similar to a mandated clients' rights committee that the mental health field must follow when working with persons who are disabled. How is it that my child and children in my community, like Gavin and Ben, are protected from unnecessary seclusion or restraint outside of the walls of school? But as soon as they walk into school, the rules change, and although I have not personally experienced or heavily investigated the issue, it presents as rather similar to an issue that a university conduct board might see. Does a student's individualized education plan suggest seclusion? Was the situation handled correctly? These are just some of the questions a rights committee might ask. The issue for us, PPU, is twofold. We support NWDSA and the DRO in demanding all seclusion rooms be removed and ask schools not to lock out, lock our children in a room to de-escalate behavior. We are asking for an independent special ed rights accountability committee. Thank you for letting me finish this up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our first item on our agenda, which is a budget update from Superintendent Smith.
And thank you for that. I wanted to just do a brief update on our current year budget, and you know that at this time of year, what we are involved in is enrollment balancing, so we're looking at what number of students we plan for in each school and what number actually show up, and then we go through a process of looking at how we actually get staff to the schools that need more staff. Traditionally, we have built into our budget what we call a number of FTE that are reserved for this purpose, and it's already part of the budget. Last spring, when we budgeted, as you know, we made the decision to push all of our staff into the schools in the spring and then come back and revisit now, where we would do one of two things: either come back to the Board and request FTE to do the balancing, or second to that would be to move staff from schools that had fewer students show up and move them to the schools that have more students show up. So the position we're in, and part of my report to you tonight, the other piece to this is in, we don't receive our actual audit until November, so we'll do a formal, our first budget amendment in November, December. What I'm looking to you to do tonight is to actually allow me to go ahead and, based on the information I'm going to give you tonight, to release staff into the schools now, where we're keeping stability in the system. So I'm going to walk you through what our current financial situation is, which is this year's adopted budget had a 4% reserve set aside that was an uncommitted contingency, which is roughly $18.6 million. So that was our planned for reserve. Our ending fund balance is actually $16 million beyond that number, and I'm going to walk you through what, how we have that $16 million, and then what my proposal to you is of how we use it. So the $16 million, our local option revenue is higher than was forecasted by $750,000. Our E-rate reimbursement, we've received $1.2 million that's not included in the budget because it's discretionary and you can't plan on the amount. It's received, it's federal reimbursement for technology expenses that, that's the dollar amount we actually received since budgeting. Our PERS expenses are lower by $1.5 million because of the mix of employees, so the difference between what's projected and what's actual based on what group the actual employees fall into. Our utility savings are, were higher, so higher savings than expected by $1.4 million, and this is largely because of the boiler burner conversions. And then, yay, which I'm going to just say, credit to the Board for taking that because it's really, we're realizing the benefit of that, yes. And then, $11 million is a result of vacancies, so positions that went unfilled, and belt tightening. So where did we underspend last year? So at the same time, we're going through our budgeting process, the same time period, we're also working to really tightly control our spending, and that realized $11 million. So that's the dollar amount. What my proposal to you is, is that fall balancing, and I'm going to say that I'm going to assume that anything that we're allocating this year, since we're in the first year of the biennium, we also need to be able to do in the second year of the biennium, so that we're, it's a two-year, a two-year plan as opposed to spend it all in the single year. So this is a two-year process. So our fall balancing FTE would be a total of 30, full-time equivalent, so 30 FTE, which allows us to have the average kindergarten size in a school be 25 or below. If you're above 25, it triggers more resource. And I say the average size, meaning like if inside an individual school, you've got a 23 and a 26, like you've got to have your average be below 25, not have an individual school decision be that you keep one low and then come back to us and ask for more. So average size, above 25 at your school triggers more resource. That our high school teacher load, we are respecting the 180 cap. That the opportunity to take eight classes was available to all of our high school students, and we've staffed for that and planned for that. We've got 600 more students in our system this year, so that we are actually programming for those students, and that we've then taken into account the schools that had more students show up in them, but that we're not pulling from schools that are already staffed if they had fewer students show up. So this is really a move to try and keep stability in the system and maximize, you know, our ability to program and staff. So the second group, we had a grant that we were able to apply for from Oregon Department of Education since the budget was completed, that for a match of $250,000, which is the equivalent of two and a half FTE, we were able to add 6.5 FTE and PE teachers to nine schools, which is a terrific thing, and those schools have really appreciated it. So what's included in this proposal is our piece of the match, but that leveraged additional dollars. We also have a grant match for a teacher-mentor program, and this is continuing our new teacher-mentor program we started last year. It's a grant from ODE, and for $200,000 in our, of our expense, it sustains eight teacher-mentors, each of whom mentor 15 new teachers, and this one's been just, I think, high value to us in terms of really giving new teachers the support that they need. And then adding an arts teacher on special assignment, and again, we have not had one of those in many years, but the Arts TOSA would support all of our arts programming, including implementation of the new arts tax, which is funding 46 arts teachers in grades K through 5. So that's part of the teaching FTE that would be added. Additionally, we're proposing to add 68 part-time classified staff to each, every one of our K-5, K-8, and middle schools, and I say classified staff to then be determined by the school of what kind of classified support they specifically need, so we're not defining it more specifically than that. But this is, our classified staff have been cut dramatically, and I'm going to say, even this small amount of classified support back to a school means the world. So it increases the flexibility of a school to meet the needs of kids. In our 10 high schools, so the nine high schools plus Alliance, to add part-time classified staff to support additional career coordinator capacity in each one of those schools. And then, the next section is to add, to do a pool of $150,000 that is reserved to hire retired teachers to do work sample assessment scoring support in our high schools, and this is really specifically on essential skills work samples, which have become, and we've heard a lot about just the additional stress of having to score work samples. This becomes a way for us to provide some support for the work sample scoring, and I think high value. And then finally, our athletics, doing an investment that, reinvestment that supports the move to build back towards our ability to be, meet the 6A classification, so it specifically supports freshman coaches, JV2 and freshman coaches, trainers, and transportation. So this is really about safety and building our capacity to really coach our early teams. That total dollar amount ends up coming to $6.55 million, which if I then apply that both to year one and year two, gets you up to $13.1 million, leaving you some, still some in reserves that I'm going to say is a bookmark for, in January, we have Stevens Crossing that will be completed in the Wilson Cluster that will add students to Stevenson, Gray, and Markham, so we're looking at our ability to be responsive at that point and add staff at that point. After just applying this set of investments this year alone, you are left with $6.6 in reserves. So this both allows you to make these investments and hold $6.6 in reserve. Now, this is separate from the dollars that were just allocated in the special session, and we were specifically paying attention to all of this, but this is really specifically about what our excess and reserves are. What the special session will do is add, in the second year of the biennium, $8 million for Portland Public Schools that would then be part of our regular budgeting process. So they have earmarked that specifically for teachers and instructional time, but again, that becomes part of our regular budgeting process, and that's not what's on the table right now. I just want to be very clear, it's two separate things we're talking about here, and this is really about the use of our dollars that were realized in the way that I just described to you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Blay.
Thank you. Board members, comments, thoughts, questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
In terms of the $6.6 reserves, could you clarify that for me? That's adding to- That's adding to the existing reserves that we have.
Correct.
So, it's adding to the 18?
Adding to the 18, right. And it brings our uncommitted contingency up to 6.6% of, of our budget, yes.
So, it's not 6.6 million?
No, no, 6.6%. So, it brings it up to 6.6%. So, right now, we're at 4%. It brings us up to, so thank you for the clarification. Up to 6.6%.
And, and the total number in that is?
It is 30.7 million.
Okay.
So, and I'll, so again, for our reserves, we have had a policy, by policy, that we have 3% in reserve. We have had practice at trying to hold reserves at at least 5%. This last year, actually in our original budget proposal, we were all the way down to 3.5, 3.5%. By the time we had an approved budget, it was up to 4%, but this gets us back up to 6.6. However, you heard me say too, that I'm looking at the investment we're making now, also being able to make the same investment year two, so that we're, and again, we, it's been rare that we've been able to look at two years and not just be year to year, let alone even partial years when we're looking at our budget, our budget numbers. So, this is kind of a landmark moment that we can think in a two-year timeframe here. So, it's just a different kind of, like, opportunity to put stability in our system.
So, so, but on practice, we've been at 5%? I mean, over the last 10 years or so?
Not even that long. And Bobby has perspective on this one. No, we've been working to do practice of 5%.
And, and this puts us above that?
It puts us above that, yes. The other one I'll throw in here is, in, in the spring, we had also agreed to use, to hold 1.5 as a potential backstop for the arts tax because it was in question at the moment we were approving our budget, and that since has been resolved, so we know we aren't going to need to do, use that as a backstop. So, now that's been, yeah, which is good as well.
I was going to say, this is just so exciting, and I just really appreciate the way you've kind of strategically and, you know, very carefully targeted the investments at things that we know are working, that we want to sustain or expand, problems that we know are out there that we just haven't had the resource to tackle. So, I just, this is so exciting and such great news. And I know it's not going to meet all the needs, it doesn't get us all the way there, obviously, but just so fantastic to be adding back in all these different areas of need throughout the district. And that on top of that, and then by going into this budget, we'll be able to have the discussion about how can we use those additional resources from the social session, which is, it's a great, it's a great place to be. So, just really appreciate the way you've kind of worked through a really, really thoughtful investment. So, this is great.
So, I, I am also thrilled that we're able to do this. Just the ones that I would pull out is my favorites. I'm very excited about putting 30 more FTE in the schools. Clearly, we have classes that are overcrowded, and we need to do something about that, so I'm really happy that that went there. I'm also excited about adding the Arts TOSA and to, to support the investment that the city and our taxpayers are making in the arts, for us to be able to coordinate that effort, I think is, is important. And, you know, I just can't say enough about how hard our classified staff works, and so I'm thrilled that we are putting more classified staff back across the schools. The only question I had was around athletics and the building back to the PIL, which I support. And it's, it, the things that you called out, Carol, I want to make sure that we're not talking just about football.
No.
We're talking about sports across, across the board.
Right. This transportation has gone from almost all sports.
Right, right. And the trainers.
And the trainers are really important.
This is totally safety and, yep, building up the younger kids to be prepared.
Yep, right, great. Thanks, appreciate that.
So, I'll probably repeat some of my colleagues here, but the, I think it's, I think it's fair to note that a lot of what we just heard has been, has been stuff that we've been hearing for a period of time that, that's been needed. And obviously, the, the 30 FTE in, in the schools has big, has been a big one. That plays a significant role in workload, it plays a significant role in, in kids getting the, the attention that they need from the teachers that are in front of the classroom. It also is responsive to, to those schools that have the higher numbers that we didn't anticipate necessarily. And that's really exciting to hear. The other thing too, and, and I see this a lot particularly in my zone, but is not pulling teachers away and staff away from schools that didn't have the students show up. Creating that continuity in those, in those schools is, is really important. The mentor program, I think that's something that is for a fairly nominal investment, that's something, to retain that is, is pretty important. The PE teachers, that's always exciting. The, you know, having, having a TOSA.
Oh, my God.
For arts.
I should explain what that is, a teacher on special assignment.
Teacher on special assignment. To create an opportunity for continuity as we implement this, the arts tax, I think is absolutely critical. And when we have the, the opportunity to invest in TOSAs, a lot, a lot of people, teachers particularly, get, get a lot of stuff out of that, a lot of positive stuff out of that, and students get a lot of positive stuff out of that. The, you know, in, in my zone, in King, we've seen parents and others advocating for some classified staff to come in and, and offer some help. And I think this is an, has been an opportunity to, to provide that help, so that's exciting. Career coordination, boy, go figure, right? I mean, this is something that, that, that offers an opportunity for kids as they prepare, prepare for that next step. Offering teachers an opportunity to, for, and I know I'm repeating everything, but I like it. But offering teachers an opportunity to, to get some, some help doing sample assessment. I think that, again, it's speaking to, it's speaking to what we've heard from teachers saying this, this opportunity, it's very difficult to be in the classroom all day long and then have the, the work that they have to do beyond that. And then, of course, the re, the reinvestment in, in sports too. I, I think, I'm always, I've always been the one who has said, hey, I'm okay with 3% reserve if it offers some programming and creates an opportunity for, to not forget about who's in our classrooms now. So, I would be, I would be along the line, probably less conservative and say, why don't we find other opportunities to invest? But I'm pretty satisfied with the way it, it looks right now and, and really supportive of it. And I would say, go to it, get these folks out in the schools as soon as possible.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So, yeah, I'm really pleased with where we landed also. It sounds like next year, in terms of what the legislature did, the money should probably primarily be used to reduce class size or maybe add days. It sounds like that's the restriction, right?
Teachers and instructional time.
Right.
And they'll probably do more guidance, but at the moment, that's, yep.
So, I think, you know, in general, I'm really happy with this. I think that we all have our kind of pet things that we think about and that we hope over time we can budget in next year if it ends up that we have some additional. I know we had, we definitely had talked about days, and my interest would be starting school earlier, so that as kids are taking IB tests and AP tests, they actually have a week or more of additional instructional time under their belt, or maybe even doing some midsemester interventions, so that we catch kids when they're struggling rather than waiting to let them fail. And I know you and I have talked before about eventually bringing back the ombudsman position to try to help when a parent has a concern. You know, I think we've heard different parents in different communities, and I think that would be a, a really good thing for us to think about bringing back at some point.
So, that one, you, like, when we actually do the budget amendment in November, December, like, things like that, we have the opportunity to build toward, like, an addition like that if that's something we felt strongly about at that point.
So, that one's one I feel strongly about. And the other one is at some point stabilizing our outdoor school funding. I mean, we all talk about STEM and STEAM and hands-on learning, and that's one that I think the community places a pretty high value in. So, those are just ones to be thinking about as we go, but really exciting.
Thanks, Bobby.
What about that 2.9 million for Stevens Crossing? That's 29 FTE. What is that? Can you just?
It's not.
That's came out like that, and I.
Yeah, it's not all for that.
I assume you're not putting 29 FTE into Stevens Crossing.
It's just telling that there's that much left in, in, of this dollar amount, there would be that much left. If we're applying these, these investments over two years, you still have that amount remaining for either other things that get added in the November, December first budget amendment and one of the, and I'm just noting for you that one of the things we have to be cognizant of is we're going to have a, an influx of kids that hit those three schools in January that we don't know numbers on yet. No, I don't anticipate the full 2.9 million.
The 2.9 million relates to the 6.5 million in how now?
So, you have.
Now, you have the reserve money, now you got the 2.9, you got the Stevens Crossing people, and then you have the reserve money. And how does that relate?
So, you have, what I just outlined for you was roughly 6.55 million. If we do that again in year two, roughly, you end up with an investment of 13.1 million. And I'm more just giving you that, so you have a sense of, we're planning for this over two years, not like, spend all 16 million right now. If you then subtract the 13.1 from 16, you get to the 2.9. That is more just telling you that's how much is still there.
Right. And then, one of the anticipated.
One of the anticipated issues.
Because Stevens Creek Crossing is going to have a high number of students, the families have been relocated, and they would be brought back.
Correct.
So, low-income families, there's a new Head Start facility that's planned for the site, and we want, I mean, this is not a population that we want to, we want to make sure that we're anticipating meeting the needs of those kids in the schools coming in.
And they'll, they'll be added to three of our schools that will expect an influx that we want to be able to respond to quickly.
Right.
And add FTE. So, I'm more just saying we're not doing that at this moment. It's in our future, we want to be able to be responsive.
So, the 2.9 million is just part of the reserves, really?
It just becomes.
It's not really 2.9 million.
It's just part of the reserves. It's just added to the reserves, correct?
I found $100 in a drawer last week. I thought it was pretty.
We'll take that, we'll take that too.
The career coordinator thing, can you explain? We add, want to add 4.5 FTE to the career coordinator and, to the career coordinators, period, adding career coordinators. So, if I'm out in a high school today, so 4.5 is a half-time in each high school, correct? And so, if I'm out in a high school today, let's say I'm out of Madison.
Yep.
Do they have a career coordinator out there at all now?
So, it's adding a total of 2.5 FTE to the whole system, which allows, so you have part-time career coordinators at a number of our schools.
So, it would.
Right now, it lets them go up to full-time, and it gives them a little bit extra to do, to do, depending on what the actual configuration is at their school. So, it was really a 0.5 classified person at each high school that allows them to add to their career coordination capacity.
So, now the career coordination in each school is how much?
So, we're going to get into complicated math here because, in terms of talking about FTE.
We get to the achievement.
Yeah.
So, it's compact.
So, and it's, it looks a little different in each school, but it's a 0.7 FTE, it's a 0.7 FTE classified staff FTE. So, what we're adding is a 0.5 classified staff.
Five to each school?
To each school.
So, it becomes 1.2?
To each high school.
To each high school.
That's what I mean, each high school.
Correct.
So, it becomes, each high school becomes 1.2.
1.2 classified staff.
And, and so, you've got nine high schools? Do they all have career coordinator things?
That, we've got nine plus Alliance. So, Alliance, which, who does not currently have a career coordinator, so they would be getting their first 0.5 of a career coordinator.
Okay, so they got, so we have 10. So, 0.2 times 10 gives us two FTE over a career coordinator in each school.
Correct. It gives them, gives them a little extra.
So, if we took that, if we took that 2.0 back, we could put in the ombudsman, and we could put in the social service coordinator back at Roosevelt with that 2.0. Or, how much are we short in outdoor school funding? Do you remember, Bobby?
We're actually providing three days for outdoor school at this time.
So, to go to five, it would be how much money?
But it's a variety of different funding sources, and so we could either look to stabilize that or to add to it, it kind of depends.
Not going to.
And I'm not sure, I, I think the reason I was kind of pushing that one off and toward next year's discussion is because I assume that most of those are, are planned already, and I'm not sure that Multnomah County or Metro could, you know, on a dime.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Turn that into a full day or, you know, I just would like a.
I went to outdoor school for 14 years, so I kind of know.
So, I just want to see if there's an opportunity for us to stabilize that and ideally increase it with partnership support, but that's, that's all I was mentioning. But I don't know that that's a, really a reasonable possibility for the history at this point.
But if we put one career coordinator in each high school, we could then do that and add an ombudsman and the social service coordinator back at Roosevelt, which is such a key position with the two FTE left over, and still have one career coordinator in each high school. Everybody'd be thanking us for the career coordinators of that, going up to one. And yet, we would then still have the ombuds person, which I think's very, very important in the school system right now particularly, and we would be able to put back that, that social service coordinator, which is so critical out there at Roosevelt. We have one in Madison, and putting it back at Roosevelt would be wonderful. I would love to see that. So, there you go. I don't know how we're going to deal with this. Now, I have another question. I don't know how we're going to deal with this. I assume we're going to make a motion on it, since we're spending money, right?
We can talk.
Okay, all right. Just wondering. Okay, now, let's go back to the, let's go to the teacher aides in all the schools. When I, when, and, this is hard to say, but it's hard, this is, this is always a hard issue. When I put the equity lens on that, I got all sorts of problems. The equity lens, because some of those schools critically need a teacher assistance more than other schools critically. Everybody needs it, we're all low. But for me, putting a couple into a school where so many kids are struggling versus putting one which in a school where a lot of kids are doing better, doesn't really, this is like the money I found in the drawer, it was like the $100. I mean, $100, it's over everything, it's over the budget, da-da-da. So, hey, let's go out to eat dinner, let's go to the movies, let's do fun things with that $100. And this is over, so I would think it's almost more important that we run it through the equity lens. So, I'd like to see those aides, two things about them. One, I'd like to see them placed according to need supposedly, if you can, which is a very difficult thing to figure out. And two, I'd like to make sure that they were working, that the instructions went out to the principals, that they were working directly with children. I mean, I've been in schools long enough, and I'm not saying, no, no reflection on our principals, they're a lot of smart people, but you get a little bit of extra time, sometimes you put it into that person takes care of some of your workload instead of some of the children's need. So, I'd like to see us go out with that direction, hey, we want to use this. So, I don't know what my fellow board members think about this equity stuff. Just kidding you guys. But I think it's a good spot for, stick it through the equity lens, and let's go out to those schools that need it the most, since it's extra money beyond our budget.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? No? I, I'll throw in my own comment or question. First of all, I want to point out that of the 16 million that you just said is, is available, $11 million of that was from belt tightening. When we talk about controlling our costs and talk about the district finding ways not to spend it, that is phenomenal. And it might also speak a little bit to the, the difficulties staff have been feeling, whether it's teachers or, or classified professionals or principals. I mean, we've really constricted in a way that has made it really, really challenging. So, I just want to say kudos to folks for, for being able to, it reminds me a little bit of the city, in that the city tightened farther than they needed to, to, to make sure that they came in a good spot. And I just want to say thank you to you and, and our staff that, that that was the case. I, I get excited about this, and I, I keep hearing, and I appreciate Director Morton's comments about, you know, let's push more money in, let's push more money in. And I'm probably, not that I don't want services for kids, but I'm, I, not knowing what, what budget things are going to come up, I'm always a little bit more conservative of that. There's no shortage on places to spend it. But I think of what the state legislature did, which is fantastic, an increasing investment again. I also can't help but think that it, it also increased. increases the volatility of the system, that it, even though it's an increase, it's a one-year increase, it's not even split over two years. And so we have to try to find some way to ward that off. And so I feel like having a healthy reserves is one way to do that. Are there any, those are, I guess, my comments or thoughts. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said. I feel like I agree. And actually, Director Buell, I really appreciate you calling out the equity lens, because I think it's a significant thing for us to consider about whether every school gets equal or whether we should differentiate a little bit more.
I have problems.
Yeah, I think given that this is a fall enrollment balancing piece, it's not the full budget process, that this is, I mean, do you have the direction you need? Because we really need you to be able to move forward, given that it's October.
If you want, I was just going to say, so I appreciate Superintendent Smith knowing the urgency of this issue about coming to us with an update before we can actually do a formal amendment to the budget. So while we can't technically vote at this point, we do want, I think most of us want to get these resources into schools as much as possible. So I'm looking for a clear indication from my colleagues about support with moving forward with Superintendent's laid-out plan, knowing that we'll have a formal vote at a later meeting with an actual budget amendment. So can I see a show of support? And I'll just, give me a hand if you're in support of what Superintendent Smith is...
I have a question.
Okay, what's your question?
In order to be able to give him a little support. We, what's the schedule for us voting on this stuff?
So I believe Superintendent Smith said the audit usually comes back to us in November.
November?
And so it would be November, December would be the vote.
For your first formal budget amendment, correct.
And our direction to the superintendent from the board is, do what you want, you listen to the things, come back with a amendment that we're going to vote on, but go ahead and spend some money where you think it's non-controversial, or what?
It's with the things that she outlined now, we would be saying yes, move forward with that. And we can make amendments as we want later on, but that's what we're looking for.
Well, I'm confused how that would work, because we're saying do this, we're basically saying spend this money. But in order to spend money, this is money that's not been allocated in our budget, $16 million chunk of money. And we're going to do that without a board vote? We're going to, we should at least have a board vote to authorize her to go ahead and come back. That's fine. I mean, I know we like to do it by osmosis consensus, but how about if we do it, instruct the superintendent what to do with this 16 million, and to come back, instruct her to come back, and we can see how that comes out?
She will come back with the formal amendment. We can't change our budget until we have the audit received, but we recognize that there's a timeliness to this. And so what we are doing is not by osmosis. I'm actually asking for a physical hand raise, so the superintendent knows whether or not the plan that she has roughed out in front of us is the direction that we would generally be supportive of.
Well, I just don't think we can do a physical hand raise and have it be meaningful in any sense without an amendment and we vote. We can do a vote. Let's do a vote on that she takes this and goes, you're going to win the vote, but let's do it right. Let's do a vote. And we vote to have her go ahead with her stuff, and we give her directions on what to do, so she knows. I mean...
This is within her authority to do that.
I appreciate what you're saying. It's just, we can't amend the budget, which is ultimately what we're doing.
But we're sending her...
That's what we're doing, which is, the hand raise will be a vote, if that's how you'd like to look at it.
Okay, who's making the resolution?
So I just asked, I called the question of, do we direct the superintendent to move forward with this point, knowing that a formal amendment will come for us?
Are you doing that, is that a resolution you're making? In which case you should give the, you should give the, you should give the microphone over to Pam and step back, do the resolution, let somebody's second, and we'll take the hand vote and go home.
Thank you, Director Buell. Director Curler?
So as I understand it, just help me out if I'm wrong. So legally, we cannot vote to amend the budget until the audit, and that comes from state law. I don't know where that comes from. And so what that says to me is, is that the superintendent has the authority to spend this money without our approval. Is that correct?
Well, she's been...
But she's looking for a nod and to ourselves and also the public that, yeah, you have the authority and go for it. Is that, I mean, is that where we're at? I just wanted to...
I support that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, what?
We support the...
We're going to do a nod? We're going to do a nod?
She has the authority, Steve.
She has the authority to do it anyway, Steve.
And we can't legally vote to amend?
No, we can legally direct her to do that.
We don't need to, and there's no need to do that. We can just say who's...
Okay, you're just saying, go ahead and spend this money wherever the hell you want.
If you are in favor of Superintendent Smith moving forward with the plan as she's outraged, if you could just show a hand, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. And anybody who's opposed?
I'm not going to vote if it's not a resolution.
Okay, great. We are now going to move on to the business agenda. Ms. Patterson, are there any changes to the business agenda?
Yes, there is one change to the business agenda. On resolution 4810, the amount for the grant from the state of Oregon, I'm sorry, under the revenue for the state of Oregon grant for the dual-language, two-way bilingual grant is $120,000 instead of $100,000.
Thank you. So that is intergovernmental agreement on the second page of our business agenda.
Right. Top of page four.
Oh, sorry, top of page four. State of Oregon, November 2013 through 2016, intergovernmental agreement, dual-language, two-way bilingual grant application, changing from $100,000 to $120,000. Okay, Director Buell, can you hold on until we get this onto the table and formally considered? Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Atkins moves to adopt the business agenda. Director Knoll seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Patterson, do we have any public comment on the business agenda?
We do not.
No. Board discussion, Director Buell?
Yes, I'd like to segregate out the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation money. And I kind of like to remind people that this is just a courtesy vote here, this is a courtesy vote, to allow me to talk to it and vote against it if I decide we want to after we discuss it. So I move to, I move to take the bill, to segregate the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, which is on the third one down on the first page.
Do I have a second?
R60189.
Thank you. Do I have a second to remove the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation revenue contract, R60189? Director Buell moves. Director Regan seconds to remove it and make it its own resolution, which we will consider in a few moments. All those in favor of, I'm sorry, I should vote, all those in favor of that amendment, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. So the business agenda is amended with the removal of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation revenue contract, R60189. Now the board will consider the remaining items in resolution 4810 and 4811. Does the business agenda, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. The resolution is passed by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We will now consider resolution 4812, which is a revenue contract with Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, revenue contract, R60189. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Director Atkins moves to adopt the resolution. Director Regan adopts to, or seconds the motion. Any, do we have, well, we don't have any public comment. Do we have board comments or questions? Director Buell?
This is very similar to what we did last, the last board meeting with the $7 million. This goes out, comes back around, Gates makes a lot of money. It's not, it's not, I want to ask the superintendent to explain what the personal, how this personalized learning is working. And this, also point out that this $100,000 is the first part, and we're looking more. And then I'd like to make a comment on this, after she explains, if I could.
Sure. So this is a revenue contract that allows us to accept $100,000 from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to do the planning and allow us to prepare, along with Tillamook School District, who is our partner in this. And we're one of 20 districts nationally to be invited to submit, to be paid to prepare a grant that would be a five-year grant that allows us to enhance personalized learning opportunities for kids. So it's about professional development and technology that lets us do personalized learning, that prepares kids for college and career. So, and I will say, Director Buell has frequently raised the concern of when you accept dollars that then create a cliff for you, because you're paying for staff with outside money, that then you get to the end of it and you can't continue. We, as a district, have continued to have that issue, where we're really just mindful of when, taking grant dollars specifically to build capacity, to do staff training and development, things that live on beyond the life of the grant. This would be one of those that is truly about investing in technology, investing in new. If we're awarded the actual opportunity to do this, it's really building our capacity as a district to offer personalized learning to kids. And this revenue is helping us do the community process to plan for that opportunity to apply.
Good. Director Buell, finish up.
Could you, personalized learning, does that mean, what exactly does that mean?
That's part of exactly what we're developing. And Tillamook is, would be developing, is what does that look like? Using technology, using our ability to develop our staff. And Tillamook School District is actually one of the leaders in doing that. So as a small district, where they've got the ability to innovate in ways and do some things in a small district, the partnering is about how do we learn from that and do things that benefit both districts, but look at how do we use technology to more specifically address the needs of individual learners.
So would we address the needs of children whose primary language might be Spanish? I mean, in Tillamook, that's, you know, I grew up in Tillamook, so I know Tillamook in and outside.
It's your home district.
Yes, yes. I grew up in Tillamook, so I, you know, having, we used to look at it the opposite way. We used to learn from Portland, not, no one was learning from Tillamook.
It's a mutual benefit.
Times change, Mr. Buell.
Hell, times have changed, that's right. But I still don't, are we buying, are we buying, would this $100,000 that we spend, and it has to do with this, would this, yeah, I know, but we're, but we're spending it someplace.
And this is about...
We're taking $100,000 from Gates and we're spending it on something.
On planning. So this is a planning grant, yeah.
So it's, so we just do, we're just planning? So who are we asking to do the planning? Who's going to do the planning in this grant? See, these are critical questions for what I want to talk about. But who would be, who would plan?
So it's, it's our Office of Teaching and Learning from our, on our side, but it's also our ability to involve community and teachers and, you know, Portland Public School staff and community in looking at how this might be an opportunity for us. So...
Can I just, I mean, I'm not the world's, I'm not a great big fan of the Gates Foundation, so when I got the information about this, I went online and looked into it and kind of delved through the different links and whatnot, and read the full kind of background information on it, because I'm always wondering, like, where is this heading? What is this about? And to me, this was, this is clear. This was not something that raised red flags for me. It was really around using technology, online learning, and having more resource to be able to do that. And that's something we've identified over and over again, is really important to us, to be able to meet the needs of kids in the 21st century. So this, to me, is not an insidious or worrisome thing. This is a good thing. So that's just my two cents.
Can you wrap up your comments, so I can get to other directors who might have...
I'm just getting to the talk that I planned.
All right.
Yeah, good, thank you. The, if that's okay. It's not the fact that this is the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, though that was what red flagged it for me. What it is, is I had a teacher tell me the other day this. In the first month of school, she has dealt with a new evaluation system, which is, you got to deal with. She has dealt with a new email system. She has dealt with the new testing system for MAPS tests. She has dealt with the new standards of Common Core, which we're pushing like crazy. She has dealt with a new proficiency grading system in the first month of school. Now, I don't know if she's dealt with any of her kids or not, but this is, this type of overload of our teachers, it destabilizes our schools, particularly the poorest schools. We have a lot of kids who come out of loving, maybe, loving homes and supportive homes, but they're not very stable, some of those homes. And when they come to school, they need a stable environment. And we're kind of willy-nilly going without thinking about how we stabilize these schools. So if you're in a really fairly poor school, those kids, we're destabilizing them. We're becoming the destabilizing force, ourself as a district. And here's more things for our teachers to do, more things for them to do. I don't see how that is helping us. And I don't see why we would want to do this. Now, if we want to take the $100,000 and put in planning and hire some people, but in order to come back and ask teachers to do more, we're going to probably have more personal, I mean, professional development out of this, all sorts of things. We're asking teachers. So we're destabilizing the school a little bit more. And I just, I think sometimes we have to say, no, let's stabilize those schools, not destabilize them. And so that's why I'm going to vote no on this. It may be a great grant, but I can't, I can't buy it unless we did something different with it. I don't know, maybe some other board member has some idea what we could do different to make it work, so we didn't destabilize things.
Thank you. Director Curler?
So I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the magnitude of the grant application that we hope to, so are we talking 5 million, 6 million, 15 million? So we're taking $100,000?
Over five years.
It's over five years. What's the magnitude?
I believe it's 20 million.
So it's 20 million.
So this $100,000 goes into 20 million?
So I guess my one comment is, is that one, one of the reasons why I ran for the school board was that when I woke up in the morning and read the newspaper, that we walked away from $15 million. And we walked away because we couldn't agree, the district couldn't agree with the union. Well, it's how I read it, and it's why I ran, and one of the reasons why I ran. And when my children fight, I don't, I don't try to find out who's right. I sent them around the block as kids. Just, you know, you go around the block, you figure it out, and when you figure it out, come back. So, but I want to make sure that this doesn't turn into a repeated situation. And so my question is, what are we doing to assure that the teachers and the Portland Association of Teachers are in at the ground floor, so that we can build something together that focuses on delivering to the kids, which is what we're all about, instead of fighting over things that don't matter? And so a lot of this process, so what are we doing about that in this grant, if you could explain that to me?
So I'll say, our current process has been that grant opportunities that come before us, we generally will discuss at our IPC, which is our Instructional Practices Committee, which is a regular meeting between our Office of Teaching and Learning, CAO, myself, and the union. And that will be the place that will bring forward ideas. Or it'll be conversation between the leadership of PAT and our staff about particular grant opportunities, depending on what the timeframe is. So, and we follow different processes for different grants. Some of them have very short timeframes in which we have the opportunity to prepare and apply, some of which feel very short to everybody, so with the magnitude of work. What we've talked about doing with the union is setting up a separate subcommittee that is specifically a grant subcommittee, that has some members from the union and some members of our staff, that are regularly establishing a process of how we review grant opportunities that come... that come before us. So, like the Race to the Top Grant that we're, you're referring to last year, we spent most of our time before even putting any work into actually writing the grant and working together with the union deciding whether or not we were actually going to apply. So we submitted our intent to apply and continued the dialogue about whether or not we could jointly meet all the criteria of what it would take to apply. This time, as you know, we were, Eugene, we built on a pre-existing proposals from a previous round of Race to the Top that Eugene had prepared and Salem had prepared, and Beaverton and Portland came in at the, you know, at this round of opportunity, which was a very short window of time, to try and have the four of us go together and build Portland and Beaverton in as other parts of the grant, and folks from Beaverton and Portland, all, huge amount of work, and where it felt like too short of a window to actually have everybody have meaningful involvement. And what we've said is, great, let's stay in, keep working on it, and look at the next round that opens up. So don't consider it a done deal, keep looking at the thing and keep working on it with the four districts and our four associations, and can we keep getting to something that ultimately we can all buy into? So we're...
And this, this grant, though, specifically are...
Same thing, like, that it will be, that Office of Teaching and Learning will be working with the teachers' union. When I'm talking about the grant committee, it would be for all grants, like the ones that are coming, the opportunities that we're working together on, do they make sense for us?
So, okay, that's helpful.
The, I mean, the first thing, I have a couple of comments, but the first thing is that, I mean, our ability to respond to RFPs is absolutely critical. And it's, it's a matter of having to anticipate what is coming out, being able to dot all your i's and cross all your t's and respond in an orderly fashion and in a competitive way. So that's, keeping those lines of communication open for the next round is going to be really important. The other piece, too, and I appreciate Director Buell's questions around this, my experience with the Gates Foundation is a little bit different. And I understand, you know, this particular hundred thousand dollars could lead to a heck of a lot more, and the description of it in our, in the resolution explicitly says, working with the Tillamook School District students, teachers, and the community to build district-wide capacities to support personalized learning. So there's, there's sort of some identified groups in there that would be participating, and I would have the expectation, and I think we should all have the expectation, that those are very much the groups, depending on the need and depending on the opportunity, that we should continue to talk with as opportunities arise. But back to my experience, I, my experience has been one of, I guess, what I would call innovation and stability. I'll give you a couple of examples, concrete examples. One that I've seen is an investment in cultural arts programming, and it's, that's an entry point for a lot of students who've been disengaged from education and their parents who've been disengaged, creating an opportunity to bring them back in a way that's unique and a way that we don't, we don't often, often do, or haven't had the opportunity to do. Another one is after-school programming, after-school tutoring, which actually helps prepare students better, I mean, gets them, gets them on track, and I would argue creates stability. More recently, I've seen, I've seen funding from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation that focuses on parents and family engagement, which again, is an opportunity to bring in parents into the educational process of their youth, parents that historically have not been engaged in their children's education because they haven't had a positive experience with education. And so I've seen stability come out of that. And so my experience is a little bit different. I see it as an opportunity to be innovative in a way that is actually supportive of the academic pursuit for these youth, and in fact, supportive of kid's success in the classroom. And I've seen the evidence, particularly of those, you mentioned the equity, equity policy, equity lens, and poor schools and underserved populations. I've seen investments like these be really effective in poor, underserved population and get them on track, and I would probably argue that it created more stability for teachers who had those students in their classrooms. So I'm, I appreciate the conversation and the concern, particularly around, is this stacking too much on teachers and others? But if we're, if we have a hundred thousand dollars to plan and we're including these groups in the process of planning, I hope the outcome is not just another thing for a teacher to implement, but an opportunity for us to actually be innovative and be supportive of the student and their academic pursuit.
Any other comments before we vote? Okay. We will now vote on Resolution 4812, which is the Gates Foundation Revenue Contract, R six zero one eight nine, for a hundred thousand dollars. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 48102 is passed with a vote of six, by a vote of six to one, with student representative Davidson voting?
Yes.
Yes. Immediately following this meeting, the board will hold a planning retreat upstairs in the window conference room. Our next meeting is here in the board auditorium on October 14th at 6:00 PM. This meeting of the board is now adjourned.